Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the October 8th Planning Board meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for a pledge of allegiance and amendment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any members have any conflict of interest with respect to any of the items on the agenda Madam Secretary, we have a quorum with five people tonight. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the August 13th meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, I, there was a minor change.
Sure.
Under, uh, on page number five of the packet. I'm listed as an "aye" under the recommended approval. I was an "aye."
Okay.
The vote was four to one, not five to zero.
The packet has since been changed, so it is changed.
Okay.
It's just not what you had.
The one on line was correct, wasn't it?
It is now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August 13th?
I'll make the motion to approval.
No second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Meetings of August 13th are approved. Is there any old business? No old business. New business, 1922 Corolla Chapel, conditional rezoning. Request for conditional rezoning of property located at 1136 Corolla Village Road from single-family residential Outer Banks to conditional general business. And staff.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. The applicant is requesting a conditional rezoning from SFO, Single Family Residential Outer Banks, to a conditional general business zoning. The property is currently used as a church, and the applicant is proposing that the property be conditionally zoned for use as, continue to be used as a church. But then there's a couple of other uses they're proposing that they might want to do, excuse me, to do in the future. One of those is a daycare center, and the other's an after-school program. So just kind of orient you to the site. This is kind of a zoomed-out version that's not in your packet, but, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but down here is the lighthouse, Currituck Lighthouse. This is the property up here in the village. NC-12 right here, Ocean Trail. And here is the zoning map that shows that the property, this is the property that's currently zoned SFO. You can see the properties to the south are zoned general business, but not conditional, just straight general business. This property is currently used for retail. Property across the street is utility, I believe it's telephone that's over there. The property to the north is a conditional general business, and the use there is an inn. It's a 12-bedroom inn. And then the property here to the west is single-family Outer Banks, and it's been used as a, as a single-family dwelling. It's also had some other uses in the past, like a group home and things like that. So, the applicant, the Corolla Chapel, what they'd like to do is to construct a fellowship hall addition on the north side, and I've kind of highlighted it here on your site, on the site plan. They actually submitted a building permit application, and through that process, it was determined that they do not have enough lot coverage to do that addition under the current zoning of SFO. The SFO's district allows 30 percent lot coverage for a property of this size. And, in kind of talking about what are some potential solutions to allow them to do the addition, the conditional general business rezoning was brought up, and the general business zoning district allows 60 percent lot coverage. And just, I'll just note that what they're proposing here is about 52 percent lot coverage. So the conditional rezoning will allow an increase in lot coverage for construction of the fellowship hall, and it will also specify allowable uses of the property. They did hold a community meeting, and the attendees were in support of the rezoning Here's a map that shows the land use plan areas, and you can see that it's in the full-service area. The land use plan classifies the site as full-service in the Corolla sub-area. And the, the plan is consist, it's consistent with some policies of the land use plan, one, which are in your, your staff report. Policy Commercial Development 6, that appropriate institutional development, like small churches, should be encouraged to locate as a transitional land use between residential areas and commercial activities of a higher intensity. And then OB 5, that the county should seek to preserve the historic character and heritage of the Corolla Village. The property is also within the Corolla Village Small Area Plan boundary of the future land use map, and that plan classifies it as mixed use. Areas designated as mixed use are characterized by a diverse mix of land uses, including commercial, residential, governmental, recreation, and civic uses. And there's some policies also in your, your staff report that talk about how this proposal is consistent with land use policies in the Corolla Village Small Area Plan. Policy LU1, recognize uniqueness of the area by maintaining desirable characteristics, such as building style, scale, and architectural features. And I just want to show you the architectural elevations. You can see that this is basically a mirror image of the other side of the church there. So in, in determining whether or not to approve or deny a conditional rezoning, the board should adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness. Staff suggests that the conditional zoning is, request is consistent with the 2006 land use plan, as well as the Corolla Village Small Area Plan, and it is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows for the, the church use to continue and be expanded in accordance with the UDO, and it allows for an increase in community service opportunities for the Corolla Chapel. And staff recommends approval subject to the proposed zoning conditions. Again, stating the allowable uses, that the, prior to construction, that the applicant submit for site plan approval, future development conformed to the conceptual development plan, the site plan in your packet, and the addition constructed per the architectural renderings in your packet. And then this last comment was for the TRC, if the applicant decides to kind of change the use to daycare or after-school program, that additional review by the TRC may be required.
Are there any questions for Ms. Turner at this time? Anyone? All right, is there anyone present to represent the case?
Jim Southern, pastor, Corolla Chapel.
Sure. Come on up to the podium and state your name and address for us for the record.
It's Jim Southern. I live at 951 North Harbor View, Corolla.
All right.
State my case.
If you have one to state, yes, sir.
It's just that the chapel is, is serving the community in a, at a higher level than we have in the past. Have an extensive outreach to the international students that are in the summer months. We actually do dinners weekly where we serve between 80 and 100 international students, just as an outreach, just as an appreciation for what they do. We also, and as the church was built, I don't want to say piecemeal, but you had the original chapel in 1885, sanctuary expansion in 2002, fellowship hall, original fellowship hall in 2007. It isolated the kitchen in such a way that you carry a hot pot of water through a little five-by-eight area that opens to eight doors. And so we want to eliminate that with a kitchen that has it passed through directly into our fellowship hall. Then we will modify our existing fellowship hall into classrooms that will use, again, for further community outreach with, into the AA community and various things, as far as educational opportunities, too. We do allow Waters Edge School to frequently use our facility for large gatherings and for some classroom space when it's needed. The other thing that, it's not a part of the proposal, but something that I realized with one of our last storms, is we have extended power outages, that it could be a facility that could be used for a feeding station and other things that the community likes at this time. So a number of reasons why we would, we're moving in this direction.
Sure. Does anyone have any questions?
I know the building. I know the church. I think it's needed.
Cool. All right, well, unless you have anything else, uh...
Just to assure you that we, we will protect the historicity of the existing structure, and anything that will be done will complement and fit into that.
Sure. All right. Well, unless anyone's got any questions for this gentleman? All right, thank you. We'll open the floor for public comment, if there's anybody here else that wants to speak. All right, I think we're good. We'll close that. Are there any other questions or discussions on this item from the board? Anyone? All right, we're hearing none. Open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve with the TR, the Technical Review Committee recommendations.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve, including the five condition, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion is, motion passes. Next item is PB 1921 Island Development Tax Amendment. Guy Lunsford is requesting a tax amendment to allow development on islands accessible only by boat.
Thank you. It's me.
This way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little bit of background about this request. The UDO currently requires that new lots access NC DOT maintained roads or road built to NC DOT design and construction standards. And that's when you are doing, subdividing a lot out that meets subdivision requirements. Now, there's other building code, fire code requirements that require access as well, but that's the UDO. As we know, a tax amendment applies countywide, and doing, I will say, a very rough survey, there are approximately 21 privately-owned islands off of the Currituck mainland that this, this tax amendment could apply to. Just to give you a point of reference, Mr. Lunsford is particularly interested in developing Long Point Island that's in the Coin Jot Bay, and I'll show you a picture of that in a minute. A very similar request was made in 2005. That tax amendment was denied, and the primary reasons for denial were for citizens' health and safety, and for the inability for the county to provide adequate services. And since this, tax amendments usually do not go to our TRC, our Technical Review Committee, but since this tax amendment was so significant in regards to health and safety, it was escalated to the TRC. If you reviewed the comments in your packet, you will see that many of the TRC members expressed the same concerns as was brought up in 2005. Just for references, again, it would apply countywide, but if you can see my mouse here, this is Long Point Islands. This is the tip of Bell's Island, and over here is the intersection at Barco with 158 and 168. It's hard to read this because it's a copy of a copy of a copy from the Registered Deeds Office, but it consists of five 10-plus-acre lots. The applicant proposed a tax amendment and offered several development standards, including a disclaimer that would be placed on the plat that says, I want to read it to you, "County services, including but not limited to transportation, emergency service, law enforcement, and fire and rescue are not available at this location." So if a future buyer, renter, were to pull the plat, they would see that note. They are to provide a location on the mainland approved by the planning director for the staging of construction on the island. There would also need to be an approved, call it a parking lot, for lack of a better term, with a boat launch for the parking of the automobiles, your boat trailers, et cetera. That parking area would have to be located in an appropriate zoning district. It would have to be surfaced and continue to be maintained. It would meet the parking standards and dimensions in the UDO, and it would be screened. The Technical Review Committee did review the request and recommends denial. It's not consistent with the land use plan, and the two policies stated, and I won't read them to you verbatim, are the PP2, which says that adequate public facilities sufficient to support associated growth and development must be available. And we've already discussed that several of the TRC members suggest that that's not available. Policy ES1 states that new development shall be permitted to locate only in areas suitable to, and adequate infrastructure is available, and there's not infrastructure available there. The request is not reasonable and not in the public interest because public services, and I've listed them there, are not available to an island accessible only by boat. And that is my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board for staff?
What's the liability? Even though he would assign all that, could there still be liability on the county?
I don't know. I don't, I don't...
I mean...
I know that the, particularly Chief Melton, who is EMS, he said if someone calls, having a heart attack was the example he used, 911, they would be required to say, "I'm sorry, there's a note on the plat that says this."
Are they offering family, or are they, is he looking to resell?
Um, I don't know that. I assume sell, but I don't know that.
Does anyone else have any questions for staff? All right, is there anyone present to represent the case tonight? Mr. Wills?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm Greg Wills. I'm an attorney here in Currituck. And Ms. Kraus, in answer to some of your questions that you just asked, let me just tell you a little bit about Mr. and Mrs. Lunsford, and a little bit more by way of some history and some of the packet. Some of this information is available in the packet that I was giving my staff today. So, Mr. and Mrs. Lunsford live up in Fairfax, Virginia, and back in 2008, an LLC was formed, and they were really just sort of investors in the LLC. The original persons who represented the LLC, one was an attorney over on the beach, gosh, I'm forgetting his name, John Mooney, and the other was an engineer. They were, they were LLC members. Golly. I'm trying to, anyway, there was, there was an engineer and an attorney that were originally in this, involved in this process, and so Mr. and Mrs. Lunsford were essentially investors. Back in 2008, the, there was notes and things like this that were given to Mr. and Mrs. Lunsford, indicating that the question you asked, which is, was there any legal liability for the county, was put to the county attorney at the time, and the opinion from the county attorney was, no, there is no liability. And, and I would just tell you, as an attorney, I just, it's, it's sort of self-evident that if you're going out onto the island, you don't, you have to get there by boat. I don't know that this, that, there's no way that the, the person who goes out to the island then, then can sue the county for not being able to provide a boat out there. That was the opinion of the attorney then, and I think it's the opinion now. So since 2007, when these lots were platted, they've been paying property taxes on them ever since then. I, I will tell you that Mr. and Mrs. Lunsford ended up, sort of, in order to keep a note, a promissory, a bank note on the LLC, ended up borrowing money, and they are now the sole owners of the LLC. And I would also disclose for you that they're really not going to be the ultimate developer of this property. Although it's pretty obvious from the way that it's been laid out, you have, and again, reviewing some of the historical material that's in here, you have five lots, each of them being 10 acres or more, and so the, evidently, only three of them could be built upon, and the restrictions would probably be such just by way of the topography that they're going to be three-bedroom homes. So you're going to have single-family homes on one lot. And one of the reasons for having a 10-acre lot is you thereby avoid a whole lot of the infrastructure requirements and things like that. So as it's platted, as it's presented historically, it's foreseeable that there will be three, possibly three homes. That's because some of the historical information from KAMA and the Health Department certification indicate you probably couldn't build on two of them. So, you know, the foreseeable use is something like a hunting lodge or a small residential home on a lot. The, the issue, you know, as, as the way that the staff is currently interpreting the UDO, the only way you can, you know, have a house on a lot is to build a bridge, which has a practical effect, saying you're not going to have a house, a house out there at all. And so, you know, these, these people have a piece of property that really has no value unless you can build on it. And the central issue is, you know, is it consistent with Currituck County's, I don't know, philosophy and land use plan to, if you've, if you've got a home, or you've got a piece of property that you can build upon, are we going to let you do it? And the rationale for not doing so is that, well, we can't let you have a house there because we can't come and rescue you if something goes on. And I would just submit, and I think my client's thought and philosophy is that that's, you know, that requirement of roads and access points is not something that's uncommon to Currituck County, given our, we've got the off-road section out there, and, and, you know, we don't have NC DOT roads available to residential construction. So it's really just sort of a function of, you know, do these folks have any use that they can put to a 50-acre parcel of land that's in Currituck County? And I think undoubtedly, it has an attraction for some people who look for that degree of isolation. They want to go out there. And I, it just seems to me that it's not inconsistent with, with the way that Currituck County has developed, or that the policy should be, you can't develop or use that land. I did, I did attend the Technical Review Committee, and I, I don't dispute that all the EMS folks and things like that, even if there is no liability, they just feel bad that they can't get out there and rescue or save somebody who's out there. But, you know, just for the same reasons, we let people go out in boats and things like that, just because you have, people are going to be in the water, and they might get hurt, or they might have health problems. I just don't see that as a legitimate base to say you can't make a use of your property. And by way of history, I do want you to know that in 2005 and 2008, these issues were placed at Planning Board, and the indication was that it passed at the Planning Board level unanimously with approval. It was not brought up for a vote back in 2005 before the county commissioners, but in 2008, it was voted down, and I think it was either two to, three to five, or two to three, I can't remember, but it was a, it was a two for, three against type of vote. And there's very little language about what sort of interaction occurred back in 2008. So, these are, these are, you know, people that just want to make some use of their real property. They will not likely be the ultimate developers of the property, but they do feel that, that if, if people want to construct a home on a remote place like that, that, that they should be able to do so. It's obvious that they're going to have to get there by boat. I will say that with regard to the, the text amendment process and the language of it, that my discussions and interactions with the staff begin with, okay, we, we know exactly what the UDO said in 2005 and 2008, when this was placed before as a text amendment, but, you know, identify for me, please, those provisions of the current UDO which prohibit Rather than go through the debate about whether or not, or go and try to say the current UDO doesn't dispute it, our suggestion, and again, I say "our," I'm not, I'm primarily a litigation attorney, I'm not really a land use specialist in any way, but, you know, the suggestion was, notwithstanding anything else that's in the UDO, that was the proposed language that you'll see there, that sort of came from my discussions with staff. You should be able to construct a home on an island, provided you can provide parking. And let me be specific with regard to my understanding of the parking issue. We have, we have numerous public parking facilities in Currituck County, so someone could pull up and, and launch a boat without difficulty, but we don't want, Currituck County legitimately doesn't want people parking overnight. I think that's not even allowed in the public parking areas. So, you know, that was, that was a legitimate suggestion, and, and so we kind of put it to the staff, well, what, what sort of language would you like to see with regard to that? And assuming that the planning director will have some input when the, when the permit, the application for the permit is made, to review what their parking arrangement is. The, the final version of, so the staff put together a text recommendation, which I'm sure is in your packets, which, which I take it creates a sort of, a wholly separate review process that would be undertaken when somebody wants to apply for and obtain a building permit to construct on the island. And by the way, there's no dispute that whenever you build a house, you have to follow the North Carolina Building Code wherever you build it. So that's not really an issue, I don't think, of the UDO at all, that, that if you get a building permit, then you have to follow the UDO criteria. Also separately is the Health Department... Also separately, is the Health Department does the septic and the whole septic system. And that, too, is an area that seems to be contemplated within the staff's thing. So, there's no objection to any, anything that the staff has put together. However they want the process to go forward, when you, you know, when you make a text, when you make an application, whatever they want to do is fine. I would make one note. There's one divergence, and I hope that I'm articulating myself properly. What you'll see in your packet as a text amendment application for us was just the language that we came up generically to sort of start the process. What culminated from the staff's position, and I'm sorry, I'm sure Ms. Glave or Ms. Lo Cicero can direct you guys to the specific pages. But with regard to the staff's process, we have, that's all fine with us, except for one thing, and that is the parking criteria. And before I get specific about the language, I would say that the Lunsfords presently own a residential house on the mainland, and it's part of the same LLC, that has a boat launch and a dock area right there on the sound. And as I said a moment ago, if the, if the construction, if the concept is allowed that you can build a house out there, I just think that the text amendment that is finally adopted should allow somebody who, say, for example, you own a home on mainland Currituck, and you have a place to park your boat in mainland Currituck, you ought to be able to launch your boat and leave your car in your yard, it seems to me. You know, if somebody has a, we'll call it a hunting lodge out on the island, what objection would the county have for that person parking a boat on land that they own? So, in the staff's text amendment, which I'm assuming these 3B2 or, Ms. Lo Cicero, could you tell me what page in the packet that's before the board members your text amendment is?
If I can just clarify one thing. If the owner has a single-family dwelling on the mainland lot, you could park your car there and launch your boat there. It's if there's not already an established use where that would need to be an improved parking area.
Under the current language, the language that you all are suggesting?
Yeah, if there's a, it's no different than my single-family dwelling. I can park a licensed vehicle and a boat.
So, if I'm a lot owner in Currituck County, and I'm applying to get a building permit out there, if I have a lot on the mainland, I wouldn't-
If you have a single-family dwelling on that lot, that's your primary use, then your accessory use would be the parking of the vehicles.
Okay.
If you don't have a single, if you don't have a principal use, a single-family dwelling, then your principal use would be a parking lot. And that's where we're talking about. And while the Lunsfords have that, if they sell, it's not to say that the next owners would own a lot with a house on the mainland. So, that's why that's there.
So, then I would say, we really have no disagreement with the language that the staff put in, except that if the understanding and the interpretation of it is that, it says, through a written agreement, and I'm talking about subsection 3 of D of the staff's. So, if the parking area is approved through a written agreement, it must reflect that the parking area is, in number one, an appropriate zoning district. Is that what you're saying, that if you own a house-
Right.
-on the mainland, then you can park there?
Right. What this is talking to is if the parking is your primary use. If you have a single-family dwelling, that's your primary use-
Okay.
...which you're allowed associated parking of licensed vehicles and licensed trailers.
Okay. So, if somebody owns a lot, or owns a house on the mainland, they don't need to have this other parking stuff in order to build their second house on the island?
As long as they could use, as long as there's a single-family dwelling on it-
Okay.
-and not just a vacant lot.
Well, then, I would say that I don't know that my clients have any dispute with the language of the text amendment that the staff has submitted. That is, to the extent that it differs from ours, I understand that their staff objection is they don't approve it at all, so.
I guess my question would be, with the construction, there will be large trucks, there will be large, it's a residential area where the parking lot would be constructed.
Parking lots are not allowed as a primary use in a residential zoning district.
Okay. That was kind of where I was trying to understand that.
If they were to use a lot primarily as a parking lot, it would have to be in an appropriate area.
And I think that the language that-
Are you for that?
Well, the language that's been suggested by the staff, and again, understanding that they're saying, if you're going to do this-
Right.
-it breaks out in subsection 2, that you have to have a staging area during construction. So, you've got two different, really, two issues. One, you've got to have a place, obviously, your costs to construct on an island are going to be much bigger than constructing here, because you've got to ship everything out there. So, the staff's recommendation has, if I'm understanding it correctly, a, one, before you get your building permit, you've got to come to the staff, and you've got to show them that you've got a staging area that's at, now, that might be a temporary staging area, or, you know, it might be, my stuff is loaded at Griggs, or some approved staging area. And then, you have to have a permanent parking solution. And as I understand it now, that means if you own a mainland, and you're saying, hey, I'm just going to park my boat at my house, and, you know, that's my, the place where I boat out to, my second home out there, then you don't have to comply with those parking things. If, however, you've got somebody who doesn't live here, the only thing they own is the house that's on the island, then they are going to have to present to staff an appropriate, I guess, le-zoned parking area. And that can be, by way of a lease, you know, you can enter into a contract. I mean, there's a hunt club that's out there, there's a campground that's close by. My assumption is you could enter into a lease.
Currently, right now, there's a hunt club on the property?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I'm sorry. I think there's a hunt club on the mainland-
Oh, okay.
-not far from where the island is located. And if you could get into a long-term lease in some other facility that has a parking for them and boat launch, that would be the applicant who's going for a building permit would have to satisfy the planning director and the staff that they have adequate parking. If they own a house here, then they don't have to do that.
So, in 2000, when you came, was there, were there any impact, environmental impact studies done in 2000? I said 2000.
Well, there were, by way of that, I mean, there were KAMA, my understanding is, historically, there's correspondence placed in the file that was given to the staff back in 2007, 2008, saying that KAMA would approve. They have a letter from the Deaner Department of Natural Resources saying that, yeah, you can build, and again, I want to be clear, I think it's you can only build on three of these lots. And they had a letter from the Health Department saying, yeah, these three lots are acceptable for a three-bedroom house. And now, that historical information is what, is kind of where we are. I mean, that my clients, at the time that this application was done by the two, historically, they had every reason to believe that if the text amendment were adopted, if it was passed, then they could meet other regulatory compliance issues in order to get their building permit. And so, the expectation remains, again, my clients are not going to be the final purchaser, but whoever it is, right now, just like with any other lot, they're going to, if they're in a KAMA zone, they're going to have to get a KAMA permit. And they're going to have to get a Health Department permit. And they're going to have to get a, they're going to have to comply with the Building Code. That was true then, and it's true now. And the assumption is you can do all of those things. And so, anything, the text amendment, though, is, it makes it kind of pointless to go through those processes if, at the end of the day, you can't get them. So, yeah, our assumption is you can get those for at least three of the five lots.
And just for reference purposes, those approvals have expired. So, they would, in fact, as Mr. Wills said, have to come in for new approvals.
And just by way of background, we've talked to, you know, people that are in the business, you know, in virotech and some other contractors that deal with this stuff, and the expectation is, yeah, you can get those things now. So, if we could, if the text amendment is adopted as it's currently platted, my understanding is that you may have three, three-bedroom homes, each on a 10-acre parcel, on three of the parcels.
Any more questions for the applicant?
I do want to say just one thing for my clients. They have been paying property taxes on these residential lots for, you know, over 10 years now. The residential lots and the, you know, if you have to build a bridge to get out to them, they'll never be built. And so, they just, they want to be able to make some use of the land that they own.
Any questions for Mr. Wills?
Thank you all very much.
I'll open the floor for public comment, if there's anyone here that wants to speak on, on this item. I'll close the public hearing. Hearing none. Any more questions or discussions from the board members?
What was expired? The self-dividing?
The KAMA permits, there may have been some Army Corps permits, Health Department. There may have been a letter about building permits as well. I can't remember.
I guess it shows five, but only three are buildable. And I guess my, you know.
Three are potentially buildable. You wouldn't know that until they went out. And that's just for this island.
Right. And this opens up to all the islands.
County-wide, yes, ma'am.
Is this one of the larger islands, or they're larger ones?
They're larger ones.
They're larger ones. I don't have any more questions.
All right. Anyone else? Hearing none. I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'd make a motion to deny the applicant the text amendment in that it is not consistent with the 2006 land use plan because Policy PB2 of the, let me read that. That LUP states that adequate public facilities sufficient to support associated growth and development must be available. Firefighting, emergency medical service, et cetera, will not be available to the island based on TRC comments. Policy ES1 of the LUP states that new development shall be permitted to locate only in areas where suitable soils and adequate infrastructure is available. This request is not reasonable and not in the public interest because adequate public services, firefighting, emergency medical services, law enforcement, or other county services, et cetera, are not available to an island accessible only by boat.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Hearing none, motion fails.
Motion passed.
I'm sorry.
Yes, okay.
Motion passed.
Just to clarify, thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that. I want to clarify.
I just wanted to clarify, that's-
Item failed, but the motion passed.
Right. Yes, sir. Thank you.
PB 1823, request to convert 72 two-sided townhomes into 35 TND townhomes. Increase SFD lots from 350 to 353. Remove alleyways, remove some roadways, provide additional connectivity to the tract to the north. Modify the phasing schedule, increase front setbacks and maximum building size for TND townhomes. Reduce minimum lot size, typical lot size and minimum lot width for TND single-family lots. Increase maximum setback and lot coverage for TND single-family lots. Decrease minimum lot size, typical lot size, minimum lot width, and typical lot width for conventional single-family lots. Increase maximum setback and lot coverage for conventional single-family lots. Lower minimum right-of-way width for typical divided boulevards, and provide a range of width. And staff?
Thank you. You did very well with that.
All right. Got it all.
Okay, just to remind you, this is the false planned development residential subdivision, or the rezoning that was approved a few months ago, that requesting to amend. To reorient you, this is Eagle Creek, and this is ranch land. The property is, was rezoned to PDR. It is full service in the land use plan, limited service in the Moyoc small area plan. I tried to figure out how to fit these side by side, so I couldn't do it. I'm not that smart when it comes to this stuff. This is the plan that was approved. The primary changes that you're going to see when I switch to the next slide will be in this multi-family area here, and then back in this area, they're showing the wastewater treatment plant. So, that is the amended plan request. And not to reiterate what the chairman just read to you, but this will be, this request is to convert 72 two-sided townhomes, which are, we would consider multifamily, into 35 TND townhomes, which we would consider multifamily as well. So, it's a conversion from one type of multifamily to another type. Eliminating some of the alleyways, and that is, you see, in this area, and some roadways. They're providing additional connectivity to the north. This property has been proposed to be developed with a PDR as well. Modify the phasing schedule some. Increase the single-family dwelling units by three to 353. And then, all of those things that the chairman just read to you about setbacks and lot sizes and those kinds of things, I won't sit here and reread all of that to you. Just a big picture, overall net unit count change, you'll see that they're redoing away with those two-sided townhomes. They've discovered that there's no longer a market for those. They're increasing the other townhomes by 35, single-family dwelling units by three. So, the net change there is, they're losing 34 dwelling units. So, the net change there is, they're losing 34 dwelling units, so instead of the approved 513 dwelling units, they're requesting 479 dwelling units. The terms and conditions document is in your packet, and I just took a few snippets just to go over some of the things that are changing. The first phase of the development is changing to not exceed from 70 to 71, and also in the terms and conditions document, they need to add that Phase 1 will be the wastewater treatment plant as well, that was corrected on the plat, but we'll need to catch that in the terms and conditions document, too. They are removing the reference to off-site wastewater, since that's not available at this time, and they are requesting a change to clearing of trees or vegetation if there are minor impacts associated with stormwater management. Very, very small, but this is basically all the things that were read to you that are changing, you could see the one that was approved, and then when you look through this list, that's the text that we read to you earlier about the things that are changing, and they are full-size in your packet, if you want to look at those. Technical review committee does recommend approval of this request. The Board of Commissioners determined that the original PDR was consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan and the Moyoc Small Area Plan, and the Board determined that the request was reasonable and in the public interest because it is required by changed conditions and addresses a demonstrated community need by providing a full-service area that offers mixed-use development with both residential and commercial components. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Tammy, on, you referenced, you said the word connectivity, what is, are the people in ranch land going to be able to get to this place?
No, ranch land will not. It'll be the Flora tract to the north of this.
Okay, all right. Just a thought.
Yes.
Will this connect to the Flora tract?
And there's also a connection, you can see this little teeny thing here, this was just approved as Moyoc Farms subdivision, it's larger lots, Sam Miller did that, I don't, y'all wouldn't have seen it because it was used permit. But anyway, they're connecting to this development as well down here.
Where's the drainage ditch that was possibly going to be approved? I mean, improved, yes.
Off-site drainage? I'm going to let Mr. Bissell speak to that, but there's a couple of what we call, we call them blue line ditches, but they're major drainage ditches that border the property and, in fact, cut through the property. And off-site improvements would have been trying to help Eagle Creek's drainage as well as Ranchland's drainage. And the drainage requirements, the order that was prepared after the last approval, all those drainage requirements would remain the same.
Are they required to improve the drainage?
The way the order reads, that if they get permission from off-site property owners, then they will be required to make those improvements.
Do you want to answer his question?
I'd be glad to elaborate on that if you like.
Sure.
The drainage improvements that were proposed are to, if you look at the major canal which is rolling, rolling the creek that runs through the property, that is being improved, and it's being improved by widening it, by laying back the side slope so that they can be maintained, by putting it on grade, by taking out some ups and downs, and trees and other obstructions that are in it, and that is going to continue across the Flora property to the north as well, or actually to the west, up to Eagle Creek. And then that canal continues to the east and is along the common property line with the Moyoc Farms property that Tammy was just talking about.
That one's down here.
Which is right now, right all the way from there to the, to 168, so that'll also be laid back, and we do have an agreement with that property owner to allow that to be done where it runs down that common property line. And then it'll be, will be clearing and snagging, and then as we continue downstream all the way to a free-flowing outlet. There's another drainage outlet that runs under 168, near the northern corner of the property, you can see a culvert on there.
Which one you want?
Yeah, we can stick with this one.
Okay.
See where that small pond is in the northern corner, there's a culvert that runs under 168, too, and then we are proposing to also clean out a section of that between the railroad and Guinea Road where it's overgrown and not working right. And then we're going to clean out and actually construct a new ditch all along the common property line with ranch land. And right now, there's no good drainage outlet for that part of ranch land, and we're going to construct a ditch there. And actually, the one member of the ranch land community who was at the last community meeting is in a low area back there, and he agreed to, he would like to connect his property to that ditch, and so he'll actually provide a drainage easement on his property to allow that to happen. And then we're going to be constructing a berm on the development side of the new, that new property line ditch to make sure that our stormwater doesn't impact ranch land. So, we're going to improve the property line ditch to give them an outlet, and then we're going to provide a berm on our side of that outlet. So, those are, I don't think I missed anything.
Is there, how many retention ponds are there on this?
Six, seven, eight...
Seven that I can see.
Seven, eight, nine, 10, I think.
Okay.
Do you have pictures of the old, the 72 two-sided townhomes and the one you're proposing now, just to visually see the difference?
I don't have any. I should have followed up. Can I access it? Let me see.
We don't have any pictures of the two-sided townhomes, we have just a footprint that you see in this site plan. It's the northeastern quadrant, really, of the, and it's right in, well, really just right next to that small pond that we were talking about. Yeah, that area right there, that's where the 72 two-sided townhomes are proposed on the other version. If you can go back to that one, you can... There.
How many easements would you need to obtain to improve the off-water storm? Do you know? How many easements would have to be obtained?
I think it's around five, six, maybe.
And you already have one who is agreed?
We already have three, which are the agreements for the major work that needs to be done. The other ones that we haven't obtained yet are really the minor stuff, and we expect that those will be easier, that's just clearing and snagging an existing outlet.
Now, I'm not an engineer, but the pipes that run under the highway, and again, I don't know capacity, I don't know that, but will there be more drainage pipes needing to be installed under the highway, or are you looking at that to serve the drainage? Because it all goes that way, it all goes under the highway.
Yeah, we'll actually be reducing what goes that way.
I'm sorry?
I said, we'll actually be reducing the amount of stormwater that goes under the highway from the site because of these retention ponds and berms and what have you.
What percentage of the subdivision is open space, just off the top of your head?
I believe, well, it's on the plan, I don't want to give you the wrong, it's something over, it's well in excess of the minimum 30%, I think it's more like 37 or 8 or something on that.
That sounds right.
That looks, I mean, I'm just eyeballing it, that looks about right.
Anyway, on that same, Mr. Dahl, continuing answering your question, on that same block, we're basically putting about half as many townhomes. They're the same footprint as the ones in the adjacent block.
But the previous ones were, you'd have an alleyway and you'd park in the back, correct? And the ones you're proposing, you're parking in the front?
Both front and rear, there's still alleyways, but this one actually had a park, the original one actually had a parking lot in the back, and that's been eliminated. We provided a document with the changes tracked, so you can see exactly what we're changing from the approved terms and conditions, the order that was approved by County Commissioners, and I'm glad to kind of run through those changes.
Page 76 of your packets.
Actually, I think it starts on page...
Is the one that tracks the changes. Those, the blue text is their proposed changes.
Is there page 76 the same as my page 90?
It's like that? Oh, you want to see the terms and conditions?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Page 90?
Go to page 90, and that's the actual text of the terms and conditions.
Oh, yeah, I was looking for the text, not the plan sheet.
Page 90 is where that starts.
And a number of these changes resulted just from getting farther along in the design process, as we kind of fine-tuned the plan, the roadways and the lots and so forth, the drainage, the utilities. And as we worked the phasing plan, it just, certain type, we want to have a mix of building types in each phase, and when we re-phase it, it just happened to come out to 71 instead of 70 in that first phase. That's really the only change on that first sheet. On page, on the second page, we eliminated the off-site wastewater option, since that, as Ms. Galloway said, that option is not currently available. The original plan was approved with both on- and off-site options, but this one will be approved with just an onsite option, and if an off-site becomes available, we'll come back and ask for that amendment at that time. The third page is really just semantics, we called them rear-loaded cottage lots in the original plan, but the UDO has a particular definition of a cottage lot, which is not what we were talking about, it's just a rear-loaded, traditional neighborhood development-type lot. So, we've just changed the terminology for clarification. And with the, on the next page, the only change is the minor impacts associated with stormwater management facilities, and that language is consistent with the UDO. And then in Schedule A, we made some revisions to lots, areas, and widths, and, and again, most of these had to do just with where we ended up in the final design. We're actually getting ready to submit a preliminary plat shortly, so we've got actual lot sizes that we're working with now, minimum lot width, that's a fairly significant change there to 35 feet, and the reason for that is that if you look at the plan on the screen where that circular roadway goes around, or that ellipse goes around the central village green, you have lots that front on that that are really similar to cul-de-sac lots in terms of their frontage, so you really can't get a full-width lot on those curved parts of that road, so that's why we needed the change in that. And then the front setbacks have been decreased for the townhomes, it just really works better to have a 15-foot front setback from the sidewalk than to have a 20 with that style of building. And then maximum setbacks, which is kind of unusual to have, but the ordinance requires a maximum setback, so we have some lots that are kind of flag lots that have very large setbacks, so we just needed to accommodate those in the maximum setback. And then as far as the maximum building size for the townhomes, there's actually a typo in the order that was adopted, it said 6,000 square feet, it really should be 16,000 because we haven't actually changed the design. And then as far as lot coverage on the, we just kind of used standard lot coverages, which turned out not to be adequate to accommodate these TND-style, this TND-style development where you have a long building structure with parking in the back, and we need to have adequate width, of course, to accommodate at least two cars coming off of the alleyway in the back, and these are just how the numbers turned out. We don't want to ask for more coverage than we need because we have to account for that in the stormwater modeling and in the retention calculations, but we don't want to have less than we need and have to accommodate.
When you say TND, I'm, we were assuming that that was traditional neighborhood?
Traditional neighborhood development, which is your development style where you have on-street parking in the front, and then you have an alleyway in the back.
Yeah, the UDO would just call it single-family dwelling lots.
We were just curious, what exactly, making sure.
I have some questions going back to the drainage and going back. I noticed that the developer is going to contribute $5,000 annually for 10 years.
Yes.
Of course, the homes are going to be there for much longer.
Well, that's the off-site drainage improvements. There will in addition be an association that will be set up and funded through association dues that will take care of all of the management of the onsite drainage. This is just something that's in addition to what you would typically do.
Okay. The Moyoc Watershed District, we discussed that, it's not, it's not there, but how is it, I mean, is it possible to kind of encompass the Moyoc Watershed District around there to have those protections of the offsites in the future years? I don't know if that's possible, but, I mean...
Well, I think, you know, eventually it would be nice to set up another stormwater district like the Guinea Milla District for Rolling Creek and some of the other major drainage ways to there that would become a tax district.
But it's a volunteer program, and it's a volunteer program. I guess what makes that difficult is...
This is a volunteer program, yes. Is that what you mean?
No, I think the Moyoc, the Watershed District is also a volunteer program if you're not in it. not in it now.
If you're not in it, yes.
Right.
But the Guinea Milla districts is an actual tax district where they have a certain amount of, I think, you have a couple of cents of tax on everybody's bill that's in that district, and they've accumulated some decent revenue.
And that's, I think for me, that big concern is drainage and making sure that, you know, after 10 years, the farmers keep the drains currently now, they keep all the drainage and they do the, you know, ditch changes.
Right.
It's no longer farm.
Right.
So at some point, the growth all grows back.
Right. Well, we're saying that by 10 years, there will be $50,000 in that account for the county or whoever's in charge of that fund to use. Now, it's been.
Who will be maintaining the ditches while this project is, will the developer be maintaining the ditches while the project is in all the phases? So that $5,000 a year just.
It's really downstream drainage, just to make sure that those can be periodically cleared and snagged. The county did a clearing and snagging project there, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago, I'm going to guess, didn't Mike Doxy headed up, and.
Does that, it only needs to be done every 10 years? The drainage, to drain and snag?
I think it kind of depends on the storm events, the hurricanes and so forth.
Can I clarify something? Maybe try to. So all the, inside the subdivision will be maintained perpetually by the HOA and a stormwater maintenance association inside the boundaries. That 50,000 is just downstream. You know, it's just a, I guess, kind of just an extra precautionary measure to do downstream stuff off-site that has nothing to do with us in case, you know, we, in case it needs to be done in that 10 years again. So everything inside the subdivision will be maintained perpetually by the stormwater association, but the 50,000 is not for inside the subdivision, it's only for downstream.
And does the county, is the county, is that money going to the county? Where is that money sitting for 10 years? Who managed, yeah?
I think it's.
What does it spell out in there? It says where that money is supposed to go, but I don't remember what it says.
Can you show us where you're reading in the terms and conditions?
Page 92. Page 91, it starts on 91.
Oh, here it is.
Paragraph 5. But it doesn't say where it's being contributed to.
It says that an association will be formed for that purpose.
Yeah, I guess that's specifying that an additional, inside the stormwater association, I guess an additional 5,000 will be added, but it would be inside the association of the community. But it would be allocated 5,000 annually a year to downstream, so.
So there will be an association board of directors there that'll have the authority to spend those funds, but only on onsite improvements?
Correct. But that would not be mixed with the onsite improvements or drainage improvements you're talking about in the maintenance, that's completely separate. That's a perpetual thing we'll be doing. This is a 10-year clock for downstream off-site use, you know, as needed. Does that help at all?
Yeah, I think it says section, I think it's at the bottom. Developer or management association shall contribute 5,000 annually to the cost of a maintenance for the off-site improvement set forth in this section. Such funds shall be deposited within an association created for the purpose of maintaining off-site improvement.
And that's where the stormwater association.
That's the off-site, that's the.
Instead of the homeowners association, we'll have a homeowners association that does, you know, normal HOA stuff, then we'll have a stormwater association that will also be paid into by the homeowners and us annually for onsite and offsite stuff.
So that's where the 5,000 a year goes into that one?
Yes, sir.
To the offsite?
Correct.
Okay.
And those offsites or drainage improvements are, you know, spelled out in here that will be maintained.
While y'all are there, does anybody else have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
I do say, I will say just a comment that I do like the idea that planning of the drainage, there's something in the plans to maintain off-site facilities. I actually do like that.
It's the first time I'm aware that it's been done.
I like that.
And so the net result is we're reducing from 513 units to 479. And we're reducing 10 phases to nine phases because, well, we might come back and ask for the 10th phase later if the off-site wastewater option becomes available, but that's where the wastewater disposal facility will be, which will be constructed as part of Phase 1 with this plan.
All right. Anyone else? At the moment? We never actually did the public comment, but I don't really see anybody here, so I think we're all right.
I think all the public is in favor.
Yeah. You better hope so. If not, y'all got problems.
Internals have problems.
Yeah. All right. Unless anyone else has any other questions for staff or for the applicant. Do they?
I just have a question about the motion. Do we have to reference terms and conditions? Because what, didn't staff tweak a few things?
It was already captured in the plan that you're voting on.
Okay.
And I know Mr. Bussell will correct that in the terms and conditions document, so I don't think it would be necessary.
Is there anything special that you would like to have included in the motion? Other than the recommendations on page 73?
That'll do it.
Okay. Hearing no further questions. I'll open the floor for a motion.
I will motion to approve. Based on the technical review committees, net density change from 37 to 34 is accurate. And the drainage utility requirements in the June 24, 2019 approved water remain on change. Is, am I correct?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. She was first. I'm just louder. She was first.
Any further discussion by anyone? Anyone? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Dahl?
Yeah.
Motion passes four to one. And that's all we've got, so if anyone has any announcements for today?
I have a couple. I'm sorry that I missed, sorry I missed the work session. My boss came in my office and needed to talk with me. We will be holding a work session. Planning Board would like to come. I would like to invite you all to October 21, 4 o'clock with the Board of Commissioners. We're going to have a work session with Currytuck Station with the pattern book and with some of the language, some of the code language that we'll be bringing forward later this fall. But this is a work session to, a little less informal presentation, and we can work through some of your concerns or comments. So that will be October 21 at 4:00 p.m., and it's going to be in this room. So that was solidified today in staff meeting. We've been working on trying to come up with a date for that, so please make your best effort to come. I know it's at 4, and a lot of us, myself included, will be on the clock, or at the clock that hour, but make your effort to be here at that time. The Dune Ordinance Text Amendment has been withdrawn by the county. That, we heard that in, you heard that in June, correct, Jenny?
Initially April.
Initially April. And we've got, we went out to two different stakeholder meetings, presented that information back to the Board of Commissioners, and due to some other things, they decided to withdraw that text amendment. The big kick, the big reason is there, we are, have gone out, we're going to be doing a beach stability report.
Shoreline stability.
Shoreline stability. We've gone out for RFQ, RFPs, reviewed them, interviewed people internally, they're ready to make a decision on that. The company that will come out and do a shoreline stability study. We're not, we're going to move forward on that soon, and they want to get results of that before doing the Dune Ordinance Text Amendment. So we'll move forward on a couple of fronts there that may address the Dune issue. Any other questions that you all may have for me about different issues that may have come up? We do have the mobile wastewater treatment plant is in place in the Moyauk Regional Site, so hopefully that will give us opportunity to see some development that previously had not been able to happen in that area due to the sewer issues, so we're going to be seeing some movement there. And those are, did I hit on all the announcements I needed to?
Yes.
So if the Board has any questions for me about any other issues, topics or anything, I'll do my best to answer them.
I don't think so.
Good, we can.
Does anybody else have any announcements? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Motion and a second.